December 20th, then we'll bring the special meeting of the East Bay Charter Township Board to order at a little after 6:30 PM. If you'll join me in starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the agenda. There is the Crimson Residential Housing District-
Do you want to do roll call first?
Oh, sure. That sounds good. So, go right ahead.
All right, Bartlett.
Yes.
Walters.
Where's it?
Lyle.
Here.
I am here, friend.
Here.
And we'll note that Cook and M. Cortate are excused and absent.
Okay, very good. So, on the agenda, we have the resolution for Crimson Residential Housing District and the fiscal year 2026 draft budget. Does anybody have a conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there support? Okay, moved by S. Cortate and support by Walters. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, we'll move forward with that agenda. We have public comment, but we do not have any public here. So, we will, having offered the opportunity, we will move forward with the business before the township board. You do have this resolution. This is the Crimson Residential Housing District, Housing Certificate Resolution. As you remember, we've been through these many times. But as we were supplying the information to the state, it did not specifically say there was confusion as to when the term started and they were wanting to do, get it into the state to get approved because they want to show that they're accepted for their financing, yet they don't want to start it until after their construction. And so, we didn't specifically have that we acknowledged that. So, this resolution will do that and we'll supply it as an update to their earlier one. That application has gone through, by the way, just for information purposes, through the review with the staff and will be recommended to the State Tax Commission Board in December. So-
So, is this going to be a new resolution number?
It will.
So, that'll be '20.
Correct. Oh, I'm very sorry. See the 12 years following the anticipated construction date underneath the title?
Mm-hmm.
That is removed. Sorry, I copied that just to remember the terminology and forgot to remove that. So, it will be 2025, I think Holly told me, dash '20.
Correct.
So, is there any questions or is there a motion?
Motion.
Yeah?
Emergency services are going to pay the full shot of the true value of-
Yep, yep.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash 30, updating the approval of application for residential housing with acknowledgement of delay.
Ah, delayed onset, delayed, how about do we phrase that? With acknowledgement of delayed start commencement?
Delayed commencement.
Okay.
With acknowledgement of delayed commencement?
We can spell it right, sure. What's that, Sue?
So, you want it to say with acknowledgement of delayed commencement?
Yeah. Okay. Is there support for that? I'll support it. So, motion is made by Bartlett, supported by friend. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Okay, Bartlett.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yep.
And I vote yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Now, we go on to the fiscal year 2026 draft budget. This has not changed an iota from when you saw it, other than I finally got it to print right. Oh, I take that back. I changed the footnote on the one, I still had the footnote of the 3% estimated on there. And so, it's been changed to the 2.8. But we can go over this. Let me pull up my highlights that I had from before.
Beth, you mentioned about the seat, no, the corridor improvement?
Yeah.
Did you add that in this document?
No, that's, no. We'll go, yeah.
Go through it. Okay, thank you.
So, what you'll see December 8th, you'll have the General Appropriations Act, you'll have the resolution for the officer's salary, the resolution for the 2026 wages, and the fees, licenses, and permits. You do have, you were given the proposed resolution for wages along with the draft budget. And I still have to make sure that everybody has looked at all the fees, licenses, and permits. But you will get that with the December, December meeting as well. Let's see. The items of interest that you'll note are wages of adjustment are 2.8 is a COLA adjustment. There are just a couple places where that varies with the assessors. We do have a 4% industry adjustment and a 1% performance adjustment as well. And you were provided with the analysis that supported that information. And that included like this sheet, if you recall that? And if anyone needs a copy of it? Okay. You recall this sheet? Yep, you got it. You got it. If you want to, if you're welcome to do it if you'd like it. But that was the support for the assessors. And then, the office manager was changed from the funding in here, from part-time funding to full-time funding. For recommended changes for consistency in resident services, increased duties beyond the part-time posting, including FOIA, special assessment districts, assessing administration assistance, and so forth. The capital projects that are in this budget are $275,000 for parks. And you can see those broken out as $225,000 for Grace McDonald. And that's the engineer's estimate. That will be going out to bid this fall or early winter. Well, are we in early winter now? We're in early-
We pretty much are, yeah.
I'd say.
I'd say so.
So, but that, that amount was based off of the engineer's estimate. And that's going to include the improvements for the ADA circulation over on the west side of the parking lot. So, around the pickleball courts and the tennis courts and putting in the cornhole game area and then incorporating the pavilion into that too and putting in that warming area for the sledding hill. And then, it has $25,000 for Jen's Park Bathroom Interior. And that's just upgrading it to full ADA compliance and better flooring coating. I mean, the flooring's not changing, but we're going to coat it because it doesn't retain some of the overs of-
So, things don't permeate.
Yeah. We've had good success with what they coated the bathrooms with in Arbutus. It just doesn't have that, yeah, that public bathroom smell. So, and then, there's also, they would like to do about $25,000 in an upgrade in Pine Grove Park. And that's like, so they have the basketball area there, but hoops aren't great. It's not really painted for anything. So, they're looking at like just putting basketball to one area, maybe having the basketball hoops that raise and lower so, you know, shorter children can use it as well. And then, maybe putting some different stuff off to the right, maybe just a small pickleball, like a single pickleball court or something like that. So, and then, they wanted to have picnic table in there and then take out the older equipment that doesn't really meet the safety standards, so.
Are they going to have to expand the concrete then?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think they're just looking at covering it and painting it for certain activities. Yeah. I will tell you, one thing that is shockingly surprising is how much the basketball hoops are. The, you know, the stand, the-
The adjustable height.
And the backboard and all of that, just surprisingly expensive, especially when you're looking for some durability in a public park like that. The elections, there's $30,000 in there, election equipment. And then, of course, we have the safe routes to school and through Mount Trail expense next year. It's anticipated to be very big years for those projects in 2026. We will utilize $55,900 from the $1 million that the board has set aside. So, we'll start to draw that down because it's an amount that TART would like to use and they'd like it to start to come from that source. And then, we also have that $50,000 foundation grant for safe routes to school that was already put into revenues for this year. So, it would make sense that it would be brought forward. Yeah, and there we go. So, if you take a look at the budget, one of the things I'll note is the projected amount. If you go to the back sheet, page 41 of 41, you'll see that the projected amount for this year, if you go to our revenue line item, we've been, we apparently must have budgeted pretty conservatively because we're at about $143,000 over what we anticipated in revenues. That's not really too surprising over all the line items that we have. The state numbers adjust. Grants are obviously a big factor in that too. So, and also, if you recall, the TART reimbursement for OHM engineering is included in those revenues too. So, that's not too surprising. The appropriations, we're looking at about 2.14 million and we were anticipating at 2.4. A lot of that really, a lot of it is really just line items, building on line items. You know, it's five and $10 here and it's $10,000 here and $5,000 here. That is quite a bit of it, just added up over several, oh, sorry, several departments and so forth. So, we are looking at, let's see. We anticipated having positive net revenues of about $300,000. It looks like we'll be closer to that $700,000, although I will say, I don't feel good about saying we're going to be $700,000 positive net revenues until I see something closer, until I look at this closer to like January, the end of January, beginning of February, and we get closer to the audit. And then, of course, after the audit's done, then we know for sure. But it does seem like, well, we should have been, it'll be pretty good for this year. As far as the expenses, we can just take a look at the different departments and go through if you like. On the revenue side, the, most of the standard revenues are things that you have seen before. I will point out a couple things. That transfer in of $44,000, that includes $20,000 for the administration of the short-term rentals. So, if you recall, short-term rentals is a total separate fund and the revenues pull into there. But there's no costs unless we transfer those costs. And of course, we do incur costs with that, with administration time. Same thing for about $24,000 of that for water. That is a portion of my time and goes towards water and that's been estimated here. I would say those numbers-
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, correct. It would be split between those.
Okay, on the water and sewer, I've seen that in here. I wasn't sure what it was the whole, what is money figured for? I mean, how do we pull that in and-
Yeah. So, it, this is, this will come straight from the 590 and the 595 budget. So, it'll come from the water and sewer revenues. And what it is, is basically, and Dawn pointed this out to me the same time I was thinking about it. I was on the, Tracy and I were working on something when she called. And it's basically, I spend a portion of my time, estimated about 20% of my time, on water and sewer issues with developers, with weight trim, and so forth. And so, portion of that cost should be borne by-
Revenue?
Mm-hmm, by that program. So, and actually, $24,000 is probably on the low side and we're probably, we're probably just about right to a little bit on the low side with the short-term rentals too. I don't know that I included the fully loaded amount with the short-term rentals. I'm trying to recall now on the calculation. I'd have to go back and look if I included all the benefits. Because truly, what you can include is the estimated percentage of a salary or wage, right? So, for example, I'm estimating my time at 20%. We've estimated Sam's at 25% for that program. And you can also include that same percentage of benefits, expenses, and so forth. I did do benefits in mine, but I didn't do all the rest of the items like, oh gosh, whatever's in 171, you know? So, but I figured that kind of gets us there and then we can either, you know, refine that over this next year or go by this and then refine it in the next budget year.
Was there a way to track it?
It's, so, tracking it, yes. We have had Sam track his on mine. It really is, I can, I can validate it. It's tough to do. I am, these ladies can tell you and you know, all over every place. It's five minutes here, 10, 15 minutes here, and so forth. But yeah, I mean, I could look at meeting logs and so forth, email quantity. Actually, spent more time on that with related to emails and getting things situated, the BPW Finance Subcommittee, the regular BPW meeting and so forth.
I'm just saying, so that we can make a number or solidify a number in the future.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely.
Before you turn that page, I've got one question.
Sure, sure.
Just maybe so I can handle it better. Mobile home tax.
Mm-hmm.
How do they determine that? Because if you put a quote, a mobile home or a modular, I don't even think they call them mobile homes anymore, the modular. But when you put that on a foundation, does that still classify a $6 tax?
$3, but yes. Yeah. Everything in Wood Creek and everything in Alta Vista, and then there are a few park models at-
Timber Ridge.
Timber Ridge, that we charge the $3 school tax is what it is. It's to replace the school tax.
Okay, but they don't pay property tax like you and I?
They only pay property tax on the improvements to the lots.
Yeah, if they put a garage on there and deck.
So, it's a building on leased land. So, yeah, the garage, the porches, the steps, the sidewalks, the-
Well, what I'm trying to figure out is, is, is once you put it on a foundation, what's the difference between that and a modular that they put on a foundation? They got a whole and bolt on.
A lot of it depends on the land that it's on. They, like, the people at Wood Creek don't own the land. They lease that land.
Okay.
And they put their home on it.
What about this Vista?
The same thing.
Oh, they don't?
They don't own the land.
I thought they owned the property.
No, they don't own the land. They just put their home on, they own the home on their land.
Okay.
So, they don't pay taxes on the land that they have their home on, which is part of why the school wants the $3. And it doesn't end up to be $3.
And then, the home can be moved?
Yeah, the home can be moved too. So, that's why they don't, they're not taxed. Again, it's building on leased land. So, a home could be taken off and another home could be put on.
Okay.
The other thing too, I'll draw your attention to this. I'm going to check on the transfers in that 105-900. What that represents is the 59, 55-900, I think I said it was, that TART wanted us to start to use of their $1 million. So, I'm not sure that this is quite how we should show it, but I can get in touch with Steve before we have this finalized and make sure that it's shown correctly. And the other 50 is just showing you the, the one grant.
The elders, the-
The Rotary.
Was it Rotary Council? Oh, I thought it was the Elder Council. Oh, I-
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, remember they sent us the funds, yeah?
I'm curious about the earned interest line item. We're budgeting for 50 and for the last two years, we've had, you know, 126, 177, so.
Yeah.
Just depends on how much I get on investments.
The township's typically taken the path, and we can change that, of being incredibly conservative with what they expect on the interest. But I do agree with you. I mean, I haven't done a history on that line item and of course, we don't always know what will happen with that and that can change.
Well, I can tell you right now, I can't get anything. I'm like 2% less on new investments than what I was getting the last two years.
Right, but don't we have a bunch of CDs that we-
Not CDs, we have funds. But a lot of those are coming due because I was anticipating the sewer project and not knowing what we were doing with that. So, I didn't want to tie our money up until we figured that out. Yeah, like I just had one come due in October that was at five and a quarter and I can't get anything near that right now. And it doesn't look that it will go up.
No, it's not going to get better than Tuesday.
No.
Okay. Move over to page six, which has the 171 budget, which is the Department for the Supervisor. That's pretty standard from what was seen before. We move to, and just stop me, if you have any questions, as you have, that's perfectly great. 215, which is Department of the Clerk. And that is, again, similar items to which you've seen in 171. Oh, I think the one thing we mentioned with yours was that the reason that the supplies were higher was because you have a desk that needs to be-
Yeah, the desk is broken and needs to be repaired.
Needs to be repaired, yep, yep. So, that's just a small outlier there that's anticipated. Then we go to 247. It's on page 10. This is Board of Review. It's a very small department for us and it just includes the board meeting fees. They're limited education. They do have a required education through the state. And in taking that, oftentimes, we don't even reach that small amount because sometimes an entity will put it on for free, the education, or the state will offer it remotely or something like that.
Do they go every two years it's required?
Every two years, yep. And we did just have recently, like within the past week, I think, too, we did have one member step down who's served with the township for a really long time, Carl Stidzinski.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. He's enjoying retirement and, you know, there's a lot of fishing that needs to be done, if you know Carl, so.
I don't know where he's going to find time to go fish and believe me.
Happy for him, but anyway. So, we're lucky in that board that we do have like two alternates, so we'll be fine with carrying on with the assessing. But as I tell them all the time, and I truly do mean it, I'm appreciative of that because it's not a regular thing, like you can set your clock to like, well, I'll be there the first Monday or whatever it is in the month. That's so intermittent and it's small and then you're here really long days for two days and then you're here for like 15-minute meetings another time. It's kind of a crazy one. But it's important that we have that board to be able to function. Then we go to the 253, which is the Treasures Department. I think this is pretty standard. I don't think we had any particular, no, that seven grand is traditionally for the tax supplies and it's always about that. So, so, pretty, pretty standard there.
What about the personal properties? How did I get in the treasury?
Because I collect the taxes for it and I have to take them to small claims.
Do we have any, any more of those?
No, but-
Personal property?
I mean, I did just, I just yesterday got paid for one that had outstanding taxes since '22. And, I mean, it was only 500 bucks at the end, but there was probably 100, 100-plus of that was fees. Just pay me.
The Department 257, this is the assessing department. And you'll notice a couple things here. I did mention to you about those salaries and these are just about what matches in the, I don't put it exactly from this wage to over here, if you noticed, but I do pretty darn close. Sue knows how close I put it because sometimes she's like, you have to put it that close. But anyway, the other, a little bit of an outlier here, you'll notice that the education has bumped up a little bit with some of the travel. And that's because we have our, one of our assessors taking the MAAO class, which is something that is definitely in our benefit for him to do for kind of succession planning over the long term. So, he's taken his first weekend class. If you go on a Saturday, you spend all day in class and then you take the test on a Monday. And so, he spends the Sunday there studying. And he'll have seven of those next year to do. I think there's, if I'm not wrong, there's eight of them total. Might be seven, seven or eight, but he's done one so far.
Is that being done in Lansing?
I think it is, yes. It is in, I know it's in Lansing, Ochemoze.
Yeah, I remember when I went up to St. Agnes to get my first two levels when I was an assessor. It's like a lot of traveling. But you go where you can get the right instructor in the classing.
Yeah.
And so, the dollar amounts are correct with your spreadsheet. It's just the footnote still needs to be corrected.
Yep, yep. And where Sue's talking about is you'll see the 703.15. I had to, when I first did the budget, and you guys have seen this like back in September, like a very rough draft, I was estimating the COLA at 3% and it's 2.8. So, that is just one of the, right there, that's-
Upgrades you got to do?
Yeah. One of the, I just forgot to update that one.
The dollar amount is correct though, Glenn. It does figure out at the right COLA percentage. It's just the footnote.
Okay, let's see. We go on to the 262, which is elections. Next year is an election year. It's not as busy as a presidential, but it is still busy. It's a gubernatorial year. And so, we have election wages. That is one thing I'll get with you, Sue. I didn't, on those wage part, I didn't get with you. If you want any of these changed or if you just want them left and then you change-
Right, the election assistant you did change and that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
For that, that's that 2.8-
Right.
COLA.
Right.
The others, we're still waiting as a county clerk wise to work on those numbers. I don't believe they'll change much.
Okay.
Because we just like to be consistent so that our inspectors don't hop from place to place. Most of them don't. They like staying in their community that they start in, but none of us like to be competing for that small pool.
Okay, that sounds good. And we can just do it by resolution or whatever, like we've done before.
Right.
So, no great shakes on that. Let's see. We go to the 265. This does have that top line that is the full-time wage in there. We do have the communication specialist in there. The activity for this year has been pretty limited. You can see that because she did come on later summer, early, during September.
October.
October.
Yeah, 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 I think it was a little bit later, yeah. So she's just kind of getting started and getting rolling. But you'll see, um, she's been addressing some of our website things. Um, you know, as we have a Township Facebook page now and Township Instagram, um, all of those kinds of things, been helping with like a press, press release and, um, those types of things. So she's still, uh, um, getting to know us and part of getting to know us is parting to get, getting to know local government as well because it's different than a private company, so. Um, let's see. I do have the bookkeeper down just a bit. And that's because, um, Sue and Tracy and I had talked and we are looking at having them internally do the reconciliations and then file the paperwork so that then we are using Raymond, I'm sorry, not Raymond, Manor Custerson Moore as a verifying that that's done. And then for any issues that come up during a reconciliation or how to do something or, for example, with me, like, okay, how are we gonna show these capital improvements and so forth? Uh, let's see. Everything else should be pretty well in line with previous. Um, in the, the footnotes will tell you like if they're bumped up. For example, for either what they include or for example, the hall cleaning service. You know, I have bumped that up just slightly because we usually have like a small percentage adjustment on a lot of the vendors. So I've included just a, um, a little bit there through the line items with those. Don't think there's too many other outliers there. Any questions? I know you'll stop me, but I'll, I'll ask too. Okay, the next department is two seventy-one and that is the Benefits. I did go over this, um, pretty finely when the, pre- previous to getting this to you last time. So we had the percentage that they were telling us to estimate, which is down there in the footnote for seven eleven at fourteen percent. I do have the additional personnel in there. I will tell you that it was a guess for me on whether it was an individual or a family or whatever, but knowing them a little bit now that they've started, I had a pretty reasonable guess. Um, so that amount is adjusted and does include those individuals in the recommended amount.
Right, because the office manager will be for eleven months. The, um, facilities will be for twelve months. Based on their eligibility of thirty days of service at that point before they can join.
And we did pretty good from like twenty twenty-four, you'll see, to twenty twenty-five. Not a huge jump and they had us look at a fourteen percent adjustment last year too. But we just didn't realize that because we do have employees that are changing things. Um, you know, family members age out or, um, spouses have different, you know, programs, whatever it is for that individual. So it's obviously very individual specific. But overall, um, we've kept that pretty steady from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Um, but we do see a slight increase into twenty twenty-six. But again, that is adding, um, two personnel there. So we do have the HSA deductible. That stays the same amount. And the H R A is just an estimate. That's based on about three to four, depending on if they're family or single or whatever. Um, people fully utilizing all of their, um, co-pay and deductible and all that. Uh, let's see. I have also added in the additional personnel into the life, uh, insurance, short and long-term disability and as well into the retirement, uh, plan. Okay, on the next page, you'll find Road Projects, which is four forty-six. Um, I did keep this rather limited. This includes, uh, just the road brining. And, um, also just the, the roundabout, uh, maintenance in there for the vegetation. Um, which is still an issue because when we partnered in that project, we did not sign a maintenance agreement for them. Basically open-ended and they've, they've put in other roundabouts that are similar, um, and have vegetation. But I have been, um, told when I have talked about, hey, you know, let's see if, the thing is, is you don't realize the cost of the vegetation maintenance for three years after construction because it's included in that entire, um, proposal, right? So they want them installed, they pay for the co- your, your bid or the proposal rather pays for the cost of the plants, the installation of the plants and three years maintenance to make sure that they are properly established. So what art, when ours came off, ours was the first roundabout, so ours was the first to come off. And they were like, what? And, but yet they've put in three other roundabouts that have vegetation as well. And they haven't realized the cost of those yet. That it'll be the first year, next year, the other two will come off. And I, I approached the Road Commission Manager and said, hey, let's, you know, get together a proposal, put out an R F P for a proposal to do all of them together. And he indicated that, um, they went down and cut out the, the vegetation, um, down with those other two roundabouts, which doesn't surprise me because it's the end of the year. That's what we do too, that you cut it back at the end of the year. But he also said that they would, um, likely just be filling them in with cement or rock. So, um, that's an ongoing conversation, but I've included some funding.
So is that the Road Com- Road Commission Manager or is it their commission?
He's, it's the Road Commission Manager and he's told me that he feels pretty confidently that would be the Road Commission's response. We can work toward that.
I think it's gonna, they've, uh, more money to spend, they passed, uh, pass test.
Oh, so yeah, they're thinking that it's, um, they're thinking that it's going to be like one or two projects, you know, nothing huge for them, but one or two projects. Yeah, yeah. Your point's well taken.
Don't need that, don't worry.
Um, Department four forty-eight is our utilities for our streetlights.
Question I'm like-
Yeah.
Do we have any, uh, what, there wouldn't be ours, but like these streetlights, any of them that's under, uh, the city at all?
What do you mean, under the city?
Where the city feeds them, electricity comes.
Yes. The travesty like the power.
They're kicking in, okay.
Yeah, they're upping their, their rates. Um, the ones along the Tart Trail are the city, some of the, like the Parsons Tart Trail.
Yeah.
Um, they paid for those, at least last I knew. We don't anymore. We used to, but they, they took it back over.
Okay.
Um, about four years ago.
Yeah, we don't-
After the reading there of the city, I thought, I hope everybody's-
But as far as I know, that's the only ones. I think the ones on Monson are consumers. I believe you're right.
Cause we only make consumers in Cherryland, so.
But when we have residents call and lights are out, we have to figure out- Yeah, I, yeah. Which entity that is. I tracked them for years.
All right. Um, we don't have any, we're not doing any zoning ordinance revision unless anybody desires to go back through all of that process again.
I would think Claire would have a discussion with you if that was the case.
Probably so, probably so. Um, let's see, six twenty-three is trail study. So this is a big number and, um, I don't know that we want to show it in the one oh one. I will clarify with that. I'd mentioned that to you, I think, Mindy had mentioned that to you after the meeting last time. If we do pull this out of here and put it in a capital fund, the associated revenue will be pulled out with it as well. Um, but this is, um, the amount that we're estimating, um, that we have the, the revenues, um, from the, from the grants, so. All right. The six twenty-four is the Beach District. I don't have anything in here and this is what Sue mentioned earlier and I talked with her earlier, that, um, what Beckett and Raider has recommended, John Michelangelo, is to fund it with about fifty thousand dollars. And then if, if the township were to do a TIF, if that does go through, that could be repaid to the Township's General Fund. If it doesn't go through, we wouldn't be out that money, but probably not a full fifty because we wouldn't have spent it all right away. It would just be the meeting fees at that point.
So are we paying the, um, committee members, um, the corridor improvement?
You know, that's a good question for the Township Board. Um, so far, we've been setting it up very similar to like a planning commission, a Z B A, um, Parks Commission, that sort of thing. Um, but I, I would think that we would and that would come from the, the corridor improvement funding.
Because I know we've used the others strictly as volunteering. The ones that would, did the rewrite, they weren't paid. The pre-committee wasn't paid.
Subcommittees.
Subcommittees.
Subcommittees aren't paid. And, and the implementation, yeah, the implementation team was never paid. That was all volunteer, um, work. Uh, but this, I think, is rising to a higher level and is, will be meeting, you know, monthly and we'll be having to go through budgets and, and do more that's commensurate with like a Z B A or a planning commission.
And there's a specific revenue source that's attached to it.
Yep, yep. So we will, um, adjust this and show that appropriately for that fifty thousand and the repayment of the fifty thousand. Okay, um, Planning and Zoning, um, seven oh two. Um, you'll see these, um, are adjusted by COLA for, mm. Oh, okay, that's showing, I was like, wait, we're not buying a laptop and docking station in there. That was from, um, twenty twenty-five. So just in, in, um, seven thirty in supplies, we just have a thousand in there for, for miscellaneous supplies specific to the planning and zoning. Um, we do have legal expense, contract services and engineering expense. And those, of course, that's the department that primarily utilizes those. Seven oh three is Z B A, standard meeting expenses, some education. Well, seven oh four is Planning Commission. Similar items of meeting expenses and education. And with both of those, we try to do a couple of things that are pretty cost-effective for education. You've seen us, we've partnered with other entities. We've applied for grants. Parkman has given us a grant for education. Um, as well, we utilize, we have, uh, M T As, website and webinars available to all of the people on our boards as, as well. Uh, seven fifty-one is the Parks Commission. We have the board meeting fees. You have, um, uh, some limited supplies and the food security and that one, uh, which is the farmer's market. And that one's a little higher because that includes the seeds contract where they're staffing the, uh, farmer's market. And then, um, attorney, engineer and grant fees. Um, much of what they do is, you know, planning different projects. Let's see, what else have we got in here?
Why are there two line items for attorneys? They got that many attorneys?
No, I just, I don't know why there is two. We just put the expense under one. I don't know. Sue, do you know why?
I do not. One is the triple zero, the other one looks like it's for grant fees too. So grant work, maybe we were having that come out. I don't know.
I think it's just-
It doesn't appear as though it gets used very often. We can make one inactive so that it can't be used.
Yeah, it's always been that.
But which one do you want to be inactive? Doesn't matter on my end.
Well, we'll go through and we'll align it with the other departments and stuff and the other boards.
Yep.
Um, and there's the two hundred and seventy-five thousand in, um, capital projects that I mentioned to you at the beginning of the meeting. Takes us to Department seven seventy. This has your Buildings and Groundskeeper, um, our Facilities and Recreation Coordinator. And then, um, uh, the same expenses, let's see. The Contract Services does not include and, and has, never has, just so you know, it, it doesn't include the, um, snow removal because while we did bid that out at one time, we never did utilize that bid and we do our own snow removal. And, um, in all likelihood, we probably will see some activity that we may have to come through next year and amend the budget a little bit here because we have two new employees there who are looking at the park with some fresh eyes and, um, be taking a look at some of the facilities. One of the things we're looking at is, um, a roofing project and one of the main buildings that will be, um, could be, uh, expensive. It's over at the library and we're getting estimates for, for that, but we don't have the cost right now, so.
And we still share that with the library as well, right?
Um, I believe that the, the roofing is totally our expense. Yeah, because we look back at the contract on it. But we will, I didn't want to include it in there with just a, a large random number, so. Insurance and bonds typically not particularly interesting. Um, the Board Member River Project, we weren't invoiced for that this year.
We had that discussion at the regular board meeting. I have not been able to reach out to see, um, what's going on. Can we go back to insurance and bonds?
Sure.
Um, but the proposed new vehicle, have we included that?
No, I actually have not included that, but I haven't found that those things increase, change it very much. I know when we've gotten new vehicles and replaced the old ones, it really hasn't changed it too much. So, but, but you are right about that. Um, I do have it bumped up a little bit here so that it wasn't so close to the line item, so I think that we'll have the room to fit in there.
And then we have the new ambulance coming down in January too.
And we'll be, yeah.
What's going on with the other?
So, um, it's at the Station Nine right now. We've had the, um, adjuster come and take a look at it. And then we're looking to the, um, insurance company to see next steps. And when, um, it can be replaced, it can't be fixed, it is totaled. So we can either look at something that gets replaced in a shorter timeframe that might not be exactly very similar to our other ones or, um, extend that out a little bit potentially. So we, we don't have a final word on that. Takes a little, takes a little bit. If you can believe it, we're just finishing up the lightning claim, so. And that lightning, what was that lightning, like in August, you guys?
No, it was in July because it was when I was on vacation.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's just a never-ending process.
I know. To get all the invoices in and get all of it done.
To find all the problems.
Yeah, that definitely had, yeah.
Trickle-down effect.
Yep. Um, let's see. Board Member Project, we talked about fireworks agreement, at the same amount in there. And then the same thing, um, with the, um, public access and the T T C I. Uh, the pass serve grants, if we do that and they are successful, we'll just amend the budget to show that. The pass through grants, if we do that and they are successful, we'll just amend the budget to show that. Otherwise, if I had put anything in there, I would have put something on the revenue side too so that it's just a wash, but.
I still call it, it's up north too. We pay a percentage of what we take in, is that what it is? And that, what we take in is going down, is that correct?
It is. And I just had a great meeting on Friday with Mike Quatza, was the attorney that the, all of the townships used. Last time he was in town, and we're gonna be meeting with him in January, all the township supervisors from the townships that receive the charter franchise fees and the city. And so he had asked, you know, if we could, if we could meet because we actually hadn't met in person. He was up for a different meeting. It was great information. Got to sit and talk with him for about an hour, hour and a half, and just kind of learn everything. He's got a ton of information. But to more of your point, what happens with that is, yeah, they are, they're going down. And they'll probably continue to do so. He said that the negotiations this time will probably be a little bit harder than last time. Last time, I don't think, was pre-COVID, right? And so not everybody had switched to streaming as much as now, many years later. Because I think that agreement was in twenty seventeen, wasn't it, or twenty eighteen? It was a while ago. I forget, but it was a while ago. And of course, now more people are streaming. So it'll be a tougher, tougher, and there'll probably be more information coming to you about that because it's, I would, I would do such a poor job explaining it, I'd rather have him, you know, at some time either be networked in or come to our meeting and explain it. But, you know, one of the things is, by definition, charter should also pay for the streaming side. And Netflix and all of those should be paying on the streaming side. The problem is that nobody's pushed that before. And if nobody's pushed it, they're not gonna pay it. And how, how do you push that? Well, yeah, there's, you don't necessarily want to go out and just start suing people for it. You know, do you just start invoicing them for it? I don't know, you know, so we'll, we'll be looking a lot more into that.
I can probably look at the bill. What do we pay for a bomb?
I don't remember.
Like three dollars and something, does that sound right?
It's, it's, I mean, it's not much, but it's still something.
See, what happened is, is a lot of people, charter, part of control, we're at a more technical.
You mean on regular cable? Well, you know probably why they're doing that? Because they have to pay all of the franchise fees. If they price themselves out of that market, then people will go to start to do their streaming services where they don't have to pay all of those franchise fees.
That's what they're doing.
It's a lot like the phone system right here. So who told me that? I think it was the VC three guy? Well, no, it wasn't Kurt, but it was someone else. But Kurt concurred with it too. He said, you know, we have the older phone system. And he's like, when are you gonna take a look at that? I'm like, we're gonna be taking a look at that because it's, you know, it still works for us, still works fine for us. But we'll probably be taking a look just because the phone companies are charging more and more and more all the time for those older type lines. They want to get away from them. They don't want to service them. They don't have as much for the parts of them. They want you to go to the, you know, voiceover internet protocol.
We don't have a phone in our office.
Yeah. Yeah. Because probably everybody uses their cell.
Or teens.
Or teens, yeah.
I have a phone number that goes through my computer.
Well, I think that, just like charter, I think that charter was practical, yeah. There's some, cell phone service now, and I think they're pushing that for when they have their television.
I was telling you, the reason he said they're, they're making the traditional phones more expensive so that everyone does go to the.
I'm finally, after all these years, I got rid of my landline. And because they started raising prices.
I haven't gotten rid of mine yet. I'm, I'm pulled out on that one.
Well, I hold on for many a year.
Did you? I'm surprised. You beat me to it.
What happened is I don't get all these phone calls because they don't have my number.
Oh, just wait.
Yeah.
Just wait.
You guys might have my number, but they don't.
So I do want to swing over, and I didn't reprint this out. You did have it last time. And those are the other funds that we have. And these are pretty nondescript. You've seen the two oh six, two oh seven and two ten already. Those have already.
Adopted.
Been adopted, yep. But they still go in our budget resolution. Let's see, two thirty, short term rentals. This is a simple calculation of the number of licenses that we have times the four fifty, if I recall correctly. And then the expenses, it's just a small amount in there for attorneys. Should any enforcement issues arise, the, the amount from our contract and that transfer for administration services. Again, that contract services was higher in twenty twenty-four because we transitioned from one company to the other and had a bit of an overlap while we were getting on boarded. The two forty-five is the PEG revenue. It's the other portion of that charter franchise fee that we were talking about. And those PEG fees that are expenses go toward the area community media. The two fifty-one, I have absolutely no idea why they would ever want us to budget those, but we do. I mean.
They're so arbitrary.
It's ridiculous. It's escrow. And I do get it because, but because this is escrow based on the actual expense, you don't know what that is. So that's what they have indicated for us to do from the auditors and from the accountants. Opioid settlement, I don't intend that we will get any more. There's been a few more opioid settlements, but they've been just a couple cents here or there, and so we fall below the threshold. We do have some funding in there, just about four grand. I think I might have mentioned to you, the county reached out. Would we be willing to, you know, just forward them the four grand? Which I wouldn't mind except for the fact that, you know, we could, especially with the corridor improvement authority coming in, we could use the funds that we have there because we have about, do we have about eight grand in there? I think so. That we can use some of that on the corridor improvement authority for, you know, putting things in education tree, or not tree, but. Exactly, exactly. And the county won't agree to, you know, commit anything towards that, so. What's that? Right, right. The eight fifties, oh gosh, I did not need to put your numbers in there, but you've already passed those numbers. I know.
You paid.
I, yeah.
We just passed.
So those will get, get input in there. And that is the budget, my friends. Does this seem like something that, we'll finish up those couple of items that we mentioned and bring that to you in the, but what do we call that?
December eight. General appropriation.
And hold the public hearing in December.
So.
Are you looking at bottom line?
Looking at bottom line, and I know that there's, you know, looking at the revenue and the expenditures are very different than the current year. So I'm just looking at the bottom dollar. The twenty twenty-five budget, we had an excess of three hundred thousand, and the proposals were negative three hundred thousand. And I'm just wondering, what that makes six hundred thousand dollars difference?
So it's, it's, it's not just a swing of six hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's a couple of different things. So you could take, while these numbers are bigger in twenty twenty-six, the revenue associated is bigger as well as the expenses. So that is kind of a question, like I said, that might be shown differently when you see it next time, but it'll be the, the equal amounts. What you're seeing with the twenty twenty-six is having the, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand plus thirty thousand, so about, about three hundred thousand in capital. And then you are also seeing. Yes, parks and mish capital and election capital. And then you're also seeing the reinstatement of a full-time front office manager like we had previously. But we did without that for a number of years. So that was reflected in those budgets when we did without that. And then, of course, bringing on the new Parks and Rec Coordinator. Now, that doesn't total three hundred thousand, but, but that plus the three hundred thousand in capital.
So really, it's three hundred thousand dollars in capital, which would put us right at zero.
Yeah, and that leads back to what I was saying to you guys before, which is what we really need to think about as a township. I mean, we're in a good place. We're financially sound. We're, we're, but what we need to think about moving forward, and, and this is just part of being a growing township in an area. You know, Grand Tewars County is growing, one of the largest in the state. We're one of the main townships. We have a lot of, we're busy. We're very busy here. And this is becoming then the operational budget and really doesn't have that gap that we need for the capital to continue to put away the capital. So we need to take a look at, at that. You know, this township has always operated on the revenue of a general law township, which it never has been a general law, general law township as long as I've known it. It's been a charter township. So what that means for if anyone's watching is general law townships must have the rollback every year. So you're limited in what your revenues can raise, you know, how, how much they can go up. And you're just continually rolled back, and your revenues just go up by, oh gosh, there's a, there's a factor.
The capital, CPM, capital and those, whatever that is.
Right, with your taxes, basically your, your taxes. I mean, that's not all of it because property taxes are just one part of our revenue stream. But as you've seen, charter franchise fees are going down. We always were, revenue sharing. You know, we, we say, you know, you get some, then they take some away, and then you get some. So it's not particularly a revenue source that's increasing either. That's one reason, you know, really glad you're doing passports. I mean, that, that helps. So your revenues are not growing at the rate of the work and the intensity of the services that we're providing. And so we need, we, we have a healthy fund balance, and so that's a good thing. And that can help offset some of those capital needs as we pace them with the Capital Improvements Plan. But we don't want to zap all of that down. And yet we want to have a certain amount every year that we're putting aside for capital. And so that's where I do believe in next September, we should take a look at. Do we stay at point six, seven, seven, eight? Do we roll back up to like a one mil? Which a lot of townships are doing that. If I just had that on their ballot. We don't have to put that on the ballot because we're a different type of a township. But do we roll back up to a one mil? Or do we, you know, keep, keep where we're at, maybe we implement the one percent property administration fee? I mean, there's, there's different ways to essentially do the same, do the same thing. We can take a look at what those revenues are that bring in each of those options. But, and through the, the Capital Improvement Plan that we're working, we will be working on with Beckett and Raider, we'll have identified the amount that we need to have on an annual basis above the operating cost. And we do too, Mindy, the other thing that goes into this is we do budget conservatively on our revenues and estimate over on our expenditures. Because, so with, with governmental budgeting, the interesting thing is, right, this is, this is an appropriation that allows us to pay invoices, right? It's, it's an allowance to spend in these areas. It's different than, while it does communicate like our, our, our values or what we're choosing to provide, it's different than a business budget where it's like, okay, we need to meet these revenue thresholds, and we need to sell X number of widgets. This is, this is, at its very most basic form, this is what we have to do with the state in order to spend a dime for those, for, for any of the services and supplies. So, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can see that across the board that, you know, the twenty twenty-five on the budget, right, was the same thought process was done with the twenty twenty-six budget. So I just wanted to, you know, do that sanity check on the big picture, which is very, very quickly. If you take out those cap costs, very thorough.
Fundamentally, there are some differences, but fundamentally, we're at an operational budget at this point. You know, five years ago, three years ago, you know, seven years ago, maybe not, fifteen years ago, maybe not. But it, the township is changing the amount of things that we do and are required to do are changing. All right, well, are you guys, anything else with related to the budget that you'd like to discuss? Okay, we would offer public comment, and we will offer public comment, but there is nobody here to take us up on our offer. So our next meeting date is December third. That will be about, that will be just our township. It's not what that can be township. It will be on the lift station, and it will go over the funding. Dawn Lund will be here. She's been working with Brian and Noah on this as well as has talked with Andy Campbell and so forth. So she will be here. I will not be here, but they, I am going to be able to, to zoom in, knock on wood. But I thought it was more important, honestly, that Dawn is here than to be here than for me to physically be here.
I won't be here either.
Okay. Oh, that's right, you had a class. You had a class, okay. And with that, then our next regular meeting is December eighth. I will be back for that. You'll be, you'll see everyone December eighth. So if there's nothing further, then we stand adjourned. Thank you very much, sir.